I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn to open meeting.
Second.
Now first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there, if you're here to read that. Roll call, Deb.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Chance, Wyatt.
Yes.
Myself here, and Tim is excused. Approve the agenda.
No adjustments?
No adjustments. Anybody has any questions about the agenda as stated? My motion to approve it is stated.
All make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Oh, thank goodness.
First and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. I said six zero last time.
I got you. It's all good.
Uh, consent agenda. Start out with the financials. Start another minutes. We have two steps in a minute, so we're gonna open.
You do?
Yes.
Start up, do each one separate? Or do we do the other?
You can just go through and approve all, through one motion after financials.
There's no questions on that, we'll move on to the financials.
No, this is the final twenty-two point three school year.
If anybody has any questions on that, we do the claims.
But to give you some information by email on the claims, August is oftentimes a heavier claims month because we're paying the bills for the resources order for the next school year. So, you know, I went through there, identified some that are either just annual dues or renewals, uh, or annual purchases for resources. Um, SPED is, uh, I'm sorry, ESU is, is big in August. I don't think we had an ESU claim in July. Pay all our summer services in August. Uh, so that's a spike as well. Science was in a rotation for textbooks and so that was, uh, and that was just high school, right? Yeah, so that was, uh, that was a pricey resource. Uh, so that's a, yeah, compared to last month for sure. Lot in claims this month.
Was that all your training developed, just a one day training?
Which one is that?
That'll be the sixty-nine thousand. ESU aid.
Well, that's mostly all SPED. Is that, is that your normal description for?
No, it comes up, whatever the first invoice description is, what it pulls for this report. I don't have any control over what it pulls, but it's, it's the year and dollar amount for all SPED. So.
So it's really mostly SPED?
If that's just a training.
Oh, no, there was like maybe a hundred dollars in training.
Okay.
So, it's a little misleading the way the, the report gets thrown together.
And I know that, that mileage drives you crazy for summer services. But that's just part of their reimbursement.
Any other questions on claims? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
I'll second that.
First and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. At this time, we have a student presentation. Got a new kid in school.
I am not gonna talk this time. I'm just gonna kinda hang on back. I talked too much last time. I'm just here in case you have any questions or she has a question.
So, thanks for supporting me to go to nationals. That was really a great opportunity to learn more about leadership and more programs and then like just, I guess, more word, uh, programs and. Say this thing. More programs.
Just all the F C, FCCL programs that they, they talked about a lot of new programs that they're offering in FCCL now. They have a lot of new star projects. So, you just learned a lot of new things there that we.
Um, I competed against forty-nine other people in job review. I made the top ten. I got on stage for that and then I got fifth place. And then we had the state meeting later that day and I got my gold medal then. Um, Sunday was the expo, which is a ton of different, what would you call them?
Um, exhibits, vendors. What would you say the size was like?
It was pretty big.
Bigger than our football field?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it took us, um, how many, how long a day?
Four hours.
The entire day. It was longer than four hours to go through this entire roof full of exhibits.
And you go through and you talk to them and you get signed up for talking about teen safety driving, teen drinking and driving and like tobacco and drugs. We talked about all that. Um. Well, leadership and public speaking careers and teens in the driver's seat was some of the other ones.
That was the one that you had the most fun with because what'd you get to do with the teens in the driver's seat?
You got to put on these like VR goggles and things like. What would you call them, the little hand controls? Could like drive a car. But I wasn't good.
She crashed her in several times.
It's been a history. But then our fun things, we got to go to the, the Robarco Stadium. That was pretty cool to go and see all that and their renovations. Pure leech gardens, that was cut short. Uh, big thunderstorm and tornadoes.
And hail.
Lots of hail. But so Denverville Market, that was a cool experience. You could see all the little businesses into like one business. It was weird, but.
It was different how they had turned one huge entire folder building into like little kinder, tidy, um, entrepreneurship. So, great to see how that was set up, so.
And then we toured the other training center and that was one of my favorite things. It was pretty cool to, good to see how everything works and they were actually training there while. So we have to see them lift and see them wrestle and it's pretty cool, so.
And who's your tour guy? Do you, do you remember who?
I don't remember who she was, but she was an Olympian. I still is. I don't know if she was training.
So they were able to keep, um, like she wasn't competing on the different tours you were able to go on. They had, um, stood assigned to a different tours on days that they weren't competing. So you had options of touring, you could tour the expo like that took one entire day. And so like Monday was her competition day. So we stood in line or sat in line.
For four hours.
For hours waiting to compete. So you don't do anything on your day of competition besides wait. That's, and so on other days, you would do a tour maybe in the afternoon and then you'd go to sessions in the morning. Otherwise do a tour in the morning and sessions in the afternoon. So they really mixed it up. So you would do FCCL a separate part of the day and other things in the afternoon. They kinda kept you busy morning, noon, night. Some of our sessions were at night.
Any other plans, students, just you two?
Just us two. You have to, um, for this kind of a national trip, you have to qualify to go. Unless you are a state officer, a peer ed officer, or.
National.
Or a national officer unless you're trying to run for national office. So. They do have a conference called a Fall Leadership Conference, which we used to go to a lot. But we haven't gone for several years. Uh, but that one, anyone's eligible to go to that one. So.
Is this your second or third year? Can you qualify last year?
I qualified, but I didn't go last year.
Oh, you didn't?
I did it virtually, my answer here.
Qualification, Shayla, that's quite an accomplishment.
Good for you.
So qualified three years in a row?
Where's it next year? Fargo?
No. Seattle, Washington.
Seattle, Washington.
And you've got the goal set to make it again, right? Good.
And once the kids know that you've done this, now we have a few more that want to actually try. So finally, we're getting more kids who want to try for it, so that's the goal.
Take a bus to Seattle?
Take a bus to Seattle, Washington?
I was chaperone.
Chaperone, okay.
Miserable on the yellow school, but.
Uh, there are some people that wanna go because I guess this is where brains, anatomy is. So let's go. Nice job.
You gonna do a different topic next year?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm gonna do career investigation. This is what it's called. So I investigate career.
That's right.
And I say is you learn something different every year, you learn about something different.
Yep, or you could do a different event every year and do it in something that you really wanna go to for like college. Which I think what I'm doing is pretty much every year.
Right, you're gonna, like you had talked about doing career investigation, which is a different event. So she'll have to learn all the new rules and all the totally different things. Or she could do the same job interview event, but she has to pick like a totally different career. So she can't do the same thing.
So what job interview for this did you do?
A child, childcare provider for like a daycare or like just a.
Sure will look good on your college app.
Cause this is the career you wanna go into, is something like this, so.
You want me to let you borrow my kids for a while?
Chance, would you do it for free? Won't even charge you.
I'll make you change your mind. Spend a week. Sometimes life finds out what you don't want anymore.
They're nice kids.
Yeah. Did you ever take the medal out of your pocket? Oh, yeah.
And that you were.
It's all happy sometimes.
Very nice.
Congratulations. See you back next year.
Alright.
Alright, it's time for public comment. Do we have anybody who wants to speak to that? Okay, we want to discussion items then. Number nine, board development, pages fifteen to eighteen.
We've, we've been through these pages, you know, before for sure. Uh, but to me, you know, I guess as I look through this, if we were to pick, you know, just the, the handful that maybe are the most applicable throughout a year, maybe these are it. And so I think it's just as we, as we are embarking on a new school year, I just think it's healthy to, uh, refresh, you know, communications and avoiding, avoiding conflict and chain of command, those kinds of things that maybe come up, you know, was more frequently than maybe other scenarios. So, um, that's why we just wanted to direct your attention to those handful of pages.
Yeah, it's always getting refreshed no matter how many years you've been on. Do we have any comments on, or anything? Alright, committee reports. Negotiations is the first one listed there. We met last week or maybe I guess. And talked about changing the classified staff, basically their sick days, personal days, and rearranging a little bit on how it works. And I think I'm gonna let Kelly or Darren, whichever one you wanna talk about, it's, it's a little confusing. I'll keep track of it for everybody, everybody's a little bit different, so we're trying to simplify it on the bookkeeping end of it.
Yeah, so for, for the past couple of years, you know, I, you know, Kelly and I kind of talked about just that, a bit of the complexity of our classified staff compared to certified, you know, which again, we shouldn't compare, but they're both certainly entitled benefits and the paid leave. Our certified are, they're, they're negotiable, they, negotiable entity. And they fit a little better. It doesn't matter if you're a first year teacher or a third year teacher, a bachelor's degree or a master's degree. They negotiate for the same, uh, for the same benefits package. Classified's a little different, they don't negotiate obviously, as, as will employees, but certainly, uh, entitled to a fair wage and a paid leave. Now, our classified folks come in nine month, ten month and, oh, ten and a half or eleven month and twelve month employees. So they work in a different number of days. Uh, they come as paras, cooks, custodians, transportation director, technology, business managers, secretaries. So there's just a variety, so it, it's just tough to find, there's, there's not a one size fits all for sure. So, you know, managing that, and Kelly calls them buckets, you know, there's different types of paid leave and, and, you know, a handful or more, sick, personal, holiday, vacation, bereavement. Uh, and so, you know, managing all those, uh, can be complicated really both for the employee and I think, and the employer. So PTO is paid time off. Uh, it's a, your classified, or your certified staff would probably prefer PTO to having sick and personal. Um, but most school districts don't provide PTO for teachers, for certified staff. But they may for classified, just for, just to, to simplify things. You can take a day off for whatever you want with, with approval, but ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you have approval, you know, for, for taking a day off. So, you know, we, you know, Kelly and I kind of looked at this, tried to rework it. We wanted to make sure that it was generous, uh, compared to where we currently are because we wouldn't want to, uh, replace it with something that, that wasn't as generous. Although you, you certainly could, uh, but wouldn't recommend that. Wanted to, to provide a, you know, a two-year max so they can, they can have a bank. Uh, there's something to be said for being able to carry over days from one year to the next. Um, and then to have buyback for unused leave. Uh, our certified staff has buyback for sick leave at separation. Depending upon the number of days they have in their bank determines the amount that they get for every unused day at separation. We have buyback annually for unused personal days for certified staff. Now again, we shouldn't necessarily compare, but I, I think it's reasonable to do that compared to classified and certified. If you offer one thing for one, you, you, it's reasonable to consider that you do for the other, although you don't have to. Okay? So, so we thought it was reasonable to have, uh, you know, buyback days for unused, uh, PTO days, unused paid leave upon separation. So, um, we worked something up, I, 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 uh, shared with the negotiations committee of Mike, Deb and Melissa, and we kind of went back and forth on a few things. Uh, one of them was, okay, the, the transition is the sticky part. To go from where I am now to what, how this new, uh, you know, what, what would my days look like? And, and I think our, our classified staff have every reason to hope that, well, okay, is this gonna be for better or for worse? And, and again, it, it, it's not a one size fits all. So in your folder, you have a current and a proposed, right? So I, I think it's maybe reasonable to, uh, look at and think on that and maybe negotiations might even meet again maybe between next month. Uh, and, and to consider that. I, I haven't shared this with classified staff that we were considering this. You know, for, you know, primary reason, I would kind of wanted it to maybe be a bit of a surprise. Well, you know, that, because it's, your, your two-year max is more generous than what we are and a buyback is more generous than what we are right now. And so, uh, to me, it's a, it's a more generous paid leave package and it is much, much simpler. And that's not necessarily what Kelly and I were looking for, how can we make our lives simpler? But what we have now, five different, five or six different buckets for three or four different levels of employees, uh, it's, it's just, it's just messy. This would be a lot cleaner. And again, overall, more generous for our classified staff. Kelly, do you have anything negative?
Um, I just kind of piggybacking on what you said. I'd, I'd say probably one of the benefits probably goes to our nine-month staff. And you guys know those pairs only get five sick days and that's not a lot. And a lot of those people have young kids and this would allow them to have, you know, ten, ten right off the bat. And they can carry them forward, as of right now, you can't carry the personal or career forward. You can only carry your five sick days forward. These, these folks use their five sick days every year. But if they can carry, you know, like a bereavement day or personal day every year, that would definitely give them more. And like Dr. Earl said, you know, in some, in some ways you might not get as many days. Like right now, I, I can get fifty sick days. I can get up to three weeks of vacation and two personal days, so I'm looking at sixty-some days. And I'm gonna be capped out at fifty, which is fine because it's a PTO. So, I, I don't have to use them as sick days, I don't have to use them as vacation days. They can be used for inter, intermingling. Plus, I'll get paid, you know, when I leave the company, which is something that classified staff certainly doesn't have right now, which that makes that a benefit, I'm starting to start friends playing in here. But, but, you know, overall, I definitely think it's, it's got a lot of good benefits for, for everybody involved, so. It's very generous, I think.
One of the drawbacks still is some of you have a little bit, what you're allowed, will be allowed.
Absolutely. Mr. McCabe's perfect example, cause Bob's been here three or four years, so Bob's gonna have, Bob would have seventy-five days. We'd let him, you know, according to this, but he'd have to tap out of it.
So the thing we have to consider is how we, how we handle those extra days. Do you just take them away from them? Do you pay them for them? Do you let people use them down?
That's what buyback we're talking about, for like, for the.
Well, two different buybacks. You know, the first one is buyback, if somebody is over their two-year threshold already, so on the proposed, you get X amount a year and if you don't use any, you know, you get another bunch for next year. And so you can, you, you, you can carry over until you have a two-year max. Uh, and, and we do, uh, bump the number up for longevity. So employees in years six and beyond get, earn more PTO days than those in years one through five. So we do recognize that because that's intercurrent, is that, uh, you know, the employees that have, uh, additional years of service to the district, you know, receive, you know, extra benefits. And I think that's, that's, uh, that's reasonable and somewhat routine.
Sorry, Gary, another benefit I would say for that too, cause, cause poor Gail, when it comes to July, I'm harping on him. You got vacation time, you gotta use it up, you gotta use it or lose it, use it or lose it. He could technically carry this for, if he, if he didn't get that kid to use all those vacation days. I don't usually have a problem bringing my vacation days back, but, poor Gail, he gets into the summertime and, and a roof falls off. Roof gets blown off and all of a sudden his vacation plans are, are not there, so.
That often reminds me during the school year, hey, could you, speaking of Gail, don't mean to talk about Gail with him. I'm ready with him. Uh, hey, could we get Gail to take a couple of days off, you know, before summer hits? You know, but, yeah, Gail's one of those that, you know, is, uh, but, you know, she mentioned Mr. McCabe. You know, he's been here a lot of years, so he, he actually has more days in his bank now than we would allow on the existing. And so the, this part of the discussion was should we buy those down to our, uh, the new max? Or just let him carry all those over? And then at separation, we buy those days. So, there's, there's maybe a little more to discuss. We only meet once and we wanna get this right.
Yes.
Uh, and, and so I think it's, it's maybe good then to also, you know, potentially get some feedback from the other board members and, you know, that, that you have a chance maybe to digest it. It does, it, it, it's not as simple as you might think and the, and the reason is because we have first year pairs and we have twenty-five year, twelve, twelve month employees in like Gail and Bob. But there are three different levels of PTO, as you see in, and, uh, so.
So each level is gonna have its own like max that they can carry?
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, so, so you can, you can max out at two years' worth of PTO. So if you are a ten-month employee with thirteen days, your max is twenty-six. But once you go to year six as a ten-month employee, you get sixteen days. You can then max at thirty-two, but then you'd be done at, so thirty-two would be the most days off, paid days off. Now, most people use some of those. We're very few people, you know, don't ever have a sick day.
But you can, can't, like, so when I used to, my old job, when I worked for a living, there, um, my PTO, I had like a bank or, you know, like I was allowed like two-hundred-and-forty hours. And then it had to be down to two-hundred-and-forty before the first of the year, otherwise you lost anything above that. Is that kind of what you're saying? So like these guys would, like, could maybe potentially have, they could be ten days above going into whatever we're gonna say is the fiscal, end of the fiscal year and they could like say, alright, we're gonna have to take ten days off here at the end of the year or whatever.
Yeah, uh, the only time that that's a problem right now would be the transition, I think. So we've, we've got a few employees that have banked more days right now than the new proposal would allow. So what do we do with that group? Carry them over or what's a reasonable buyback down to their, you know, that's so. And then you do have to, in the back of your mind, do have to maybe consider that your certified staff, you know, may wanna negotiate for some unused, uh, and they may ask for PTO, which, you know, my recommendation to you would be to, to not provide PTO for certified. They could continue to provide your personal and your sick, but, uh, that's between the board and PTA.
There's a lot of options on those extra days. You could pay them, pay them and buy them back. You could tell them you got two years to use them, or those, you know, so they know.
Yeah.
A lot of different, you can pay them for half of them.
It's a, it's a tricky thing.
That's the part that's sticky.
They're so, our, our PT, our, our classified staff are so valuable. We hate to say, we want you to take days away from the service to the district. But they deserve it, they've earned it.
Yes.
And, uh, they need to feel valued. Because we don't pay them what they're worth, you know, and every school district is in the same boat with regard to that. And they've been working over the past couple of years, as you have, to, to try to, you know, make the wage, you know, nobody should start at ten dollars, fifteen is, is the reasonable starting rate and arguably still too low for some of the service that our classified folks provide. So, you know, I, I might suggest then when you get to action item fourteen, you table that and, and, um, you know, next month, this could be retroactive to August one, which is the start of a new fiscal year for our classified staff. And, and we could make that work, but, um, I, I get the sense that maybe we, we want a little more think time.
I do.
Well, um, this is gonna get up to the classified staff, you know, so we can take some confidence. Yeah. Whatever, but, uh, it'd be nice to hear their opinions too. And they're gonna be all aboard because they're in different situations, so. Alright, next one is the budget committee.
Uh, I, I switched, uh, budget to safety because our budget's meeting on Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, and, and I did send out a digital copy, but so, and I didn't have safety on there, but I thought safety needed to report out. Sorry.
So safety, Matt. That was I and you and Tim. And that was, uh, Fire Chief Josh and Police Chief.
Christie.
Christie. Just kind of wanted to go over, you know, what happened with the roof and what went wrong, what could've gone better and how we would handle it. Hopefully we never have to make it, never know what might come up. Everybody got, you know, voice their opinion on, on how it went and what they did like and what they didn't like about that. And, uh, it was good, but, uh, got, got it out in the open and got a lot of good discussion and we learned a lot about what we needed to do and I think they learned a lot about what we didn't know that we needed to do. So, it went both ways. The biggest thing that came out of that was the nine-one-one call. I don't think any of us realized if you don't call nine-one-one, the fire department can't do anything. And you can't call the fire chief, you have to call nine-one-one. And he was here, but he couldn't do anything because liability reasons, cause nobody called nine-one-one. And we were kind of looking at him like, why aren't you doing anything? And he's looking at us like, why don't you open here? So, so we figured out why, all, why all that happened, so.
Very productive, I thought.
Yeah. And we got some, uh, information to the fire department about contacts and different things like that. They went through this to certain things, so. But just like, uh, you know, we wanted the gas turned off and, and I, I looked at Josh, you know, and thought, I'd be right up his alley, he knew how to do that, well, he went over with Gail as a meter, but he couldn't touch the meter because he wasn't, he didn't have any liability to do anything like that cause he wasn't called, so. And he couldn't call any more firemen in to help because he wasn't called, so. So, yeah.
No, I covered it, it was very productive, I thought.
Yeah.
We learned, I didn't know about the nine-one-one.
And there's also like FEMA. If you wanna, you know, try and get FEMA money, you have to have called nine-one-one so they have documentation of it. Now, if this were a better situation where we didn't. You know, if this were a better situation where we didn't have insurance, and we wanted to help with FEMA, we would be out of luck, because we didn't call nine-one-one, so. What about the old FEMA anyway? So that's what we got out of that, but, yeah, any more you wanna add to that? Don't move on to buildings and grounds, did you guys meet, awesome?
We did, for a while.
Yeah.
Well, I put that on there to see if you wanted to, um, mention our power to the, to the, the committee didn't actually meet since last meeting.
Right.
Um, but, we've got a little more information. I got the bid for, from Model Electric to bring power from the new transformer to the new building, or to the new garage. Twenty-six thousand dollars to bring power across the building via conduit, uh, to provide power to our new garage. So, uh, yeah, we need a Plan B for sure. It's too bad we've been waiting for months for them to provide that bid for us. I think it just shows us that, and through no fault of their own, they don't wanna do it. They don't wanna do it, so they didn't wanna come give a bid, because they didn't wanna do it, and we kinda said, give us a bid. Well, we'll give you a bid, we'll come do it if you don't pay us this much for it. So that's, that, they're, but then they're right to do that for sure. Um, I guess I wish we'd have known that months ago, and we maybe could've pivoted to something that we discussed last fall.
Yeah, we talked to the North Central Public Power way back then, and they really didn't seem like they wanted to do too much to help us out. And so I thought, well, at this price, I know those guys up there, I'm gonna call them and see if I can talk them into looking at it, doing something. And so I called, talked to Tim Hoffman, and, uh, he says, yeah, we'll take a look at it, and he sent their guy down. And I said, we got a meeting Thursday, I thought that we had a building grounds meeting, but it wasn't. But I said, we got a committee meeting Thursday, and a school board meeting on Monday, it'd be nice, we'd have some information by then. Two days later, he called me with a bid on it, so, he said, this guy, and take a look, and he says, yeah, so we can make it work? Says you may have to trim a tree, or take a tree out over here on the east side of the building. They're gonna come kitty-corner from the garage across the street to the park. So it'll be one strand, but it'll cross the street, and forty-five hundred dollars is good for, for their park. Now, we have to still get it from the top of the pole to the garage, which is, you know, over above what mile would it be? But it's not gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars, yeah, so. And they can get it done, you know, easily this fall, before it's cold. So he said they'd have to talk to the city and make sure it was okay, and put a guide wire in the park, that they wouldn't have a problem with that. So I don't know if you've talked to Jared, I haven't had all the time about it, so. So, yeah, we gotta tear one tree out, and I would say just tear the tree out, be done with it, versus try to trim it up, and look like a half a tree, but. So they're just waiting to hear from us, and I talked to Jake, and he was all for it. He couldn't believe whatever they were gonna charge us to, the twenty-six thousand dollars, he just, he was almost set. But, uh, he says, yeah, we can make this work, so. Even if they have to trim it all the way around the backside of the garage, and come in the same place that we were originally going to. Because I think he's actually got some work done in here, hasn't he? Or has he done nothing?
Uh, no. It's, it's not ready for power, and so I.
So we can still come in at any place?
We can.
So that's probably a good thing right now, so. So, yeah, do you have that on there for an action item, to go ahead and contact them and tell them to?
It's, it's not on here for an action item, and I, I think at, at that bid that he shared with you, I think we should mobilize him.
Well, it's under five thousand dollars, and he can actually go without our, we don't have to worry about the problem.
I, I, it's really a no-brainer compared to our other option, I guess. So, yeah, just wish we would've pushed it months ago, but that's okay. We just don't wanna go into the wind with an extension cord running from the shot.
Okay. Alright, are we alright on that deal?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of committee reports. Number eleven, NASB Regional Meeting.
And it's actually on the, on nine-six, not eight-thirty, so it's on nine-six, September sixth, Wednesday, it's the next Wednesday. You should've received this in the mail. Uh, if you didn't let me know, I'll make sure they have updated contact information at the NASB. So this is just our regional meeting, so when we go, it's an evening, it's about two hours, Mike's been to several. Um, uh, Tim and Deb are actually, uh, up for Level Two Recognition at that meeting. Um, so it's pretty good, we have one or two breakout sessions, a general session, networking, obviously. And then you're there with other board members from our region. Uh, it's just a nice evening.
A few vendors there usually.
There's a few vendors there, there for sure, and a few door prizes, but, uh, so that's on, uh, September sixth. Uh, so I will be notifying you by email to encourage you to authorize me to, to register you for that.
Yeah, I looked on the calendar, on the thirtieth, that's the rest of all day.
Yeah, you know, I, I put in thirty for a reason, I, I think they initially had it passed on eight-thirty, uh, earlier in the spring, and they recognized, oh, that, that will be a good idea, they have it on the ballot, go ahead.
I was just telling them, some media breakouts.
Yeah, it, it's, it's pretty good. Simple, couple hours in order.
Okay, number twelve, Review Policy, five oh four point two, Bullying Intervention and Intervention.
So we are required by law to annually review your, your bullying policy. So ours, uh, ours is, uh, bullying, uh, intervention and education. It, it used to be titled bullying prevention, and I just, I think that is just a title that is setting you up for failure, because no school is a hundred percent successful at preventing students from feeling targeted, uh, by bullies. So, uh, just, the school board just needs to look through the language of the policy again, and, uh, and then we stamp a reviewed on date, and so we're good with regard to the state. Uh, but, uh, for sure, if you think there's, um, different language to consider for addition or removal, uh, then that would be a policy committee discussion, uh, to go into next week.
Where are we at with getting digital copies of this?
Well, the, of all the policies, well, they, they are on our website, so I mean, we, you do, we do have, we do have.
Remember, we, we talked about that at one board meeting, that we could have it, so we could look through a computer screen or something.
And you, and you technically can, I mean, if you go to the, go to our website, they're all, they're all on there. And I, and, and you can access that on your phone through, uh, through our app. Five oh four point eight, it's two zero.
Mine's not, five oh four one, and then it goes to five oh four three.
She must not have put it in there.
Not it.
Ow!
Well, uh, here, let's, or, or I can, I'll, I'll put it on next month. Make sure you get a copy, yeah, okay. But I'll put one in your file, anyway, with the new revised date.
Are we standing on cameras on bus? Do we still have a camera that didn't move around, or?
We, we really don't have bus surveillance, uh, there'll be one of the vendors, I bet, at the regional meeting, but we've just never pulled the trigger, um.
I thought we used to have one, had a box in every bus, and there was kind of issues coming up with it, really.
Bluff box.
Okay.
And I used to ride the bus.
Just put a blinking light up there?
Yeah, little bus, just never hurt anybody. Um, when we made some changes to the high school handbook, kind of on that bullying points, does that, does that need to go into this? That language change?
That one was added, that's what I just went and looked to find, because it added the electronic piece into it. Because I know that was the big concern, making sure that, uh, the electronic language was added, when it's happening at school, so.
Which, which policy was that, that had the electronic language? Was that a different one than, than the bullying one, or?
They're talking about the handbook, I think.
Yeah, we added it in, the handbook, it dealt with suspension and expulsion, so we added it into that one, but it is also written in this one as well. Because that's what I just wanted to check, so.
Thank you.
Which, which page are we?
I think it's the second one, I just had it right there.
So it does have electronic, or something, or, I just didn't notice, but great, like, great door.
Is everything good with the way it is now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have a new copy in your folder for next.
Thank you.
Okay, action items, number thirteen, Discuss Take Possible Action on Board of Education Sponsorship of Teammates Mentoring Program. Janice, Molly?
So I just wanna thank you for your ongoing support of the teammates program. You, you just can't imagine how, what a blessing it is for our board, not having to do any fundraising, so we can spend our time, you know, taking care of our kids and planning activities and stuff, but it's, it's a real blessing for us. And so we do appreciate your support. The past year, we had, uh, forty-one mentees and twenty-nine mentors, so you know there's, uh, real need for more mentors. But it's, it's a good program, but, you know, some of the mentors take on two mentees, and so we're, we're working on it all the time. And we had nine-hundred-and-eighty-two match meetings, so to think of that, that many time adults got together with the kids, so there's lots of support and encouragement going on, and, you know, it, it's a fantastic program, and we do appreciate your ongoing support. Casey, I'll give you some more details, so, thank you so much.
How many, how many years have you been here?
This'll be my twentieth year, thank you for your.
I think she leads the state, I think she's state champ. In.
I started it twenty years ago, so, it'll be, the program will be twentieth, so.
Thanks, Janice, thank you.
Just to let you know, those kids that are not matched with a mentor yet, I do meet with any, um, mentee that has applied to the program, so that they all are, um, met on a weekly basis. That way I get to know them a little bit better, and it's easier for me to match them to adults when we get, we have some more mentors in place. Um, we, our celebration point is that are, that we graduated six seniors this year. Five of them are going off to college, and these are young men that have been in the program, some of them since fourth grade, and many of their mentors have, uh, been with them the entire time. I've had the privilege of graduating a second senior, and I've been with him since, uh, fifth grade, and we still, he sat with me at the pool the other last week for forty-five minutes, and so you create wonderful relationships with these kids. And so, um, we're forever looking for mentors, we had some new additions this year, and, um, so, it, I'd say, it's, I'm in the hallways, the kids know who I am, I know them by name, and so we try and make that personal touch with them at all times. Uh, no child, if they ask to be in the program, is told no, but to be patient, because I can't guarantee a mentor for you right away, but the promise that I will work on finding one for you. So I have about five, maybe six young kids that are waiting, but I have some mentors that had graduating seniors that are willing to come back and, and do it again. So, uh, we hope to get all those kids matched up, and I never went to the classrooms and opened the door to applications, simply because I didn't have the adults to go with it. But I can say, any student, or we look for kids, um, that may need to have that extra time with an adult, so we do look for those and try and address those when they come along, so. It's a, it's a going program. Another one of our highlights is we've got new T-shirts this year, and they were printed by the school, uh, economics department. They were actually printed by the school, so we got them at bargain, um, the T-shirt lady in Lynch, uh, pulled them to us for cost, we, it costs about four dollars a piece, you know, so with cooperation of the school and other people, we were able to offer new T-shirts. And, because kids always grow, and then eventually, they wear out. So, we really appreciate your support, and know it's a positive addition to our school system, and we hope to continue to do that for years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you, Casey, ladies.
You doubled from five hundred to a thousand dollars contribution to teammates, you did last year.
Right.
Right.
Is that sound good, stay a thousand?
Yes, I'll make a motion to budget a thousand dollars to support our public schools teammates for mentoring program. I was like, what?
Okay, first and second, to spend, donate a thousand dollars to the teammates mentoring program, uh, yep?
Yes.
Also?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes, the champs?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
I appreciate what you do.
Number fourteen, we're gonna table till next month. I'm gonna have to vote to do that, you know. Fifteen, Discuss Take Possible Action on Revising Policy Series Number Six Hundred and Twelve, Special Education.
Twenty policies that all have, uh, actually, one, uh, Policy Six, Nine, Twelve, Eighteen, and Nineteen of that series had no change. Um, but the rest of them became a little more cumbersome, added language to it. Um, and a lot of the language, I mean, without having to go through one, which we can do, um, it, it, there are no new mandates, no significant mandates, no, nothing that would require additional funding. Um, it's, it's a guarantee of, uh, communication, IEP procedures, um, so it's, that, that's why I put it here, as I look through them, you don't need to go through all twenty individually, you can approve, since it's a, a, a legal mandate, you can approve them in one reading, and you can approve them in batch.
Didn't we already look at these, like, among?
We've had a couple of them, Champ, you're exactly right, we've had a couple individually that have come through, but he sent the whole thing, and so I threw them all out there, and then as I was going through them, I'm like, hey, we've got two of these, which just two months ago, we approved. Uh, but there's a total of five of them that are unchanged of the twenty.
What do they do if you don't pass them?
Just run it, or I, it's, it's all, you just, you just run it, and that's.
I'll make a motion to revise Policy Series Six Twelve, Special Education as read. Your second?
Second.
Yes, my first and second, and improve Policy Six Twelve, stated, champs, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Melissa?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Five zero.
Five zero. Sixteen, Discuss Take Possible Action on First Reading of Policy Six Oh Four Point One Five, Information Related to Dyslexia.
So this, we do have two opportunities, or, or two requirements to, to read this, so, uh, dyslexia has become the fall guide term, so to speak, for reading disability, uh, and the Unicameral, uh, wants school districts to really focus on identifying, uh, reading disability, obviously, as early as possible, and to make sure that we specifically, um, screen for dyslexia. So they, they spent time in studying it, you know, what, what is it, what happens if somebody has dyslexia? Uh, and by the way, school districts better get a policy on it. This isn't gonna change anything that we do, our people that already screen for learning disability at age birth through twenty-one, I guess you're entitled to services, uh, screen for it anyway, but it does put a lot more focus on, they, they've become convinced that dyslexia is the cause of, of, uh, reading deficiency. Uh, and then we know when, when a student is deficient in reading, what path they're on for their whole life. So, it's not, I'm not necessarily, I don't wanna suggest that they don't, this isn't necessary, uh, but it won't change current practice. But we need to have this policy, so we need two readings, this month and next.
I'll make a motion to adopt Policy Number Six Oh Four Dot One Five, Information Related to Dyslexia, Dick, uh, whatever that word is, on first reading. Okay, number first and second, approve of first reading, information related to dyslexia, read that backwards, if you got it, you read it backwards. Myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
The champs?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, first reading. Seventeen, Discuss Take Possible Action on First Reading of Policy Six Oh Four Point One Six, Use of Artificial Intelligence in Schools.
So probably every school district across the country has been adopting policy with regard to AI. So probably every school district across the country has been adopting policy with regard to AI in recent months. And I, I, you know, if you had a chance to look carefully through the language, and again, we've got two readings. So you may be introduced to it tonight before next month. Maybe you'll, you know, see to it to read it closer. I, I, it just, and I've had Kyle and Jen look at it carefully and as the stewards of the day-to-day operations, the buildings, you know, is this, is this reasonable? Like, well, you know, we already kind of do that. We have a, we have a, one of the many forms that you have to fill out to start a school here is, is use of proper use of technology and such. The, the main thing with AI is educating our staff about where our kids are with technology in the world. And trying to stay with them and work with them on how it's going to become part of what we do. Because it's, it's not something we can resist. We just have to find agreeable ways to work with it and exist with it as part of our educational process. So our, our staff has had some professional development on AI last spring and then just this morning through our staff developer, staff developer at ESU. And so, and we will continue to do that throughout the year on any given Friday. Just, you know, what's out there, what are our opportunities? How can this help me as a teacher? And that's really what, one of the things I wanted her to focus on, that how do we prevent kids from cheating with AI? Now, that's a conversation, but how can I, as a teacher, use AI to help me be a better teacher? Because that's part of the discussion as well.
I had a football coach tell me once that if you ain't cheating, you ain't trying.
Now, that's an interesting philosophy.
Did you ever use that one? College football, we just don't get caught, I suppose.
But at any rate, just need a, need a first reading. And this will probably be something as AI evolves, this policy will evolve.
Is there a filter that the school has that prevents some of this?
Well, we could, there are so many different platforms. And these AI chatbots, if you will, talk to all, all these other platforms. So JC told us this morning, you cannot block AI. You can't, is that precisely what she said? She said, you know, you, you can't do it. So, and really, that shouldn't be our approach anyway.
But you can kind of tell, I mean, if a kid has the computer do his report, you can kind of tell by the language that it's not theirs.
Teachers need to know their, their students and their students' voices, you know, literally, how our students speak, how they interact, you know, and so it'll just be, you know, teaching is always evolving. And it just continues to, maybe in a faster pace than some would like, but.
I can see where it could be a problem. A student did that, the teacher questioned it, and you know, you don't have any proof.
Yeah.
And then the parent says, well, no, you know, Johnny did that himself. Well, what do you have to stand on?
Yeah. And even if a chatbot did do it, it's still not determined that it's plagiarism, that it's somebody else's work. It isn't somebody else's work. It's a chatbot that, so it's, it can be a little bit of knock your head against the wall. And some, some teachers, not ours of course, some at other schools up and down Highway twenty, they will, they will just struggle, they will not be able to evolve with this. But it's, it's reality.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy number six oh four dot one six, use of artificial intelligence in school on first reading. Yes, my first and second, on first reading to adopt policy six oh four point one six. Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Chanis?
Yes.
Dan?
Melissa?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Eighteen, discuss and take possible action on first reading of policy six oh five point oh two, alternative education program.
Well, the, for, for students that just don't, that just aren't successful in the, the way we operate, we, we still want them to become a completer. A completer means we want them to get to the finish line. So occasionally, you've got alternative paths for kids. Mr. Schmidt can maybe speak more to this, but we've got an alternative education program. We have different opportunities for kids to get to the finish line. It's very rare and it should be. It should be rare. We don't want to make, have that path necessarily too wide. But, but we're required now by rule seventeen, as you can see the legal reference on the bottom of that policy, we're required to have policy with regard to Alde.
So in the event of an expulsion, is it possible to do the online schooling for them? Just not have them in the building, but require them to attend an online seminar class here?
Yep, that's essentially what we do. I'll make a motion to adopt policy six oh five dot zero two, alternative education program on first reading. Yes, my first and second, to adopt policy six oh five oh two on first reading. Melissa?
Yes.
Chanis?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Number nineteen, discuss and take possible action on second reading and adoption of policy five oh eight point one nine, behavior points of contact.
Copy of this is in last month's packet. And it has, you know, some with regard to mental health in schools. But it's just another level of accountability from the Department of Ed, the school districts. So they've got one person who's a behavior point of contact. Ours is Mrs. Hudson. So she'll be reported to the Department of Ed and she'll have their contact information, which they already have for a variety of different things. She's our district assessment coordinator, among other things. But now, if they ever want to contact plenty of public schools, behavior point of contact, for some reason or another, they'll, they'll contact Mrs. Hudson.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt policy five oh eight point one nine, behavior point of contact on second reading.
Second.
Yes, my first and second, to approve five oh eight point one nine on the second reading. Melissa?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Chanis?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries five zero. Okay, number twenty, discuss and take possible action on revision to policy number six eleven point zero seven, graduation requirements.
So I failed to run this by Mr. Schmidt a little more carefully last month. And so you, you revised this last month and you revised it again to accurately reflect our current expectations and practice for graduation requirements. So what you see in your packet is different than what you approved last month for graduation requirements. We had to add the financial literacy piece last month because of state mandate. We already did have those five credits in our graduation requirements, but the rest of their list didn't reflect the greater rigor that we have. What was listed last month were the minimum requirements by the Department of Ed. And, and most school districts have more rigorous expectations than what basically them requirements is. So what you have here is, is, is accurate in what our requirements are.
So did we approve that last year, last week?
You approved last month, they had the financial literacy piece.
Okay, but not all the credits.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to revise policy six eleven dot zero seven, graduation requirements as read.
Second.
First and second, to approve revised policy six eleven point seven, stated. Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes, Chanis?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Number twenty-one, discuss and take possible action on NERCSA membership for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
So I included the letter from Jack Mols, who's our executive director, who does a good job of explaining the rationale for the existence of NERCSA and membership benefits. We're one of two hundred and twenty school districts out of two hundred and forty-two in the state that have been NERCSA members for several years now. And again, you, you can, or have had an opportunity to see the benefits of belonging to NERCSA, not just as a consultant, but as somebody who advocates for policies and, and with the UNICAMROL, things that benefit rural school districts. Because Omaha and Lincoln could have a tendency, they have as much clout in the UNICAMROL. Those two, those, the districts that represent Omaha and Lincoln, they have enough clout in the UNICAMROL to pass a law for the whole state of Nebraska, which they've done many times. Which really are maybe necessary for Omaha and Lincoln at the time of plane due. But that's just one of, a variety of support that we receive from NERCSA. So I would ask you to continue to provide membership for our school district.
So it's the bigger towns that don't want our members then?
Yeah, the twenty-two school districts that aren't members are generally urban school districts.
I'll make a motion to, second.
Okay, it's been first and second, to renew our NERCSA membership for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. You have to pay around fifty dollars. Myself, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Activity directors report.
Fun times happening, it's here. Fall practice started on the seventh, button pictures, poster pictures, those were on Wednesday. Friday night, we have our fall sports kickoff, so volleyball plays at five thirty. The choir is singing the anthem for that. Then cross country runs at seven. Then they're introducing all the junior pirates, junior high pirates and varsity teams. And then football plays at eight after they do their announcing of teams. And they do auction and they do a meal and a whole bunch of stuff. I think they're doing whole courts this year. So they'll have that big event again on Friday night. And then next week, Thursday, starts fall competition. So cross countries and hard and volleyball is here at home with Wakefield. Then football goes to Wakefield. Then we host the four-team tournament for volleyball on Saturday. So huddle has, everything we do will be streamed online at huddle now. So I'll put that link out there for people to watch. Our YouTube channel should still work, so if people use that, they can. But we also have a link that has all of our, anything our coaches put into huddle and have it streamed live will automatically go on and just be streamed on one place. So those two things, you should be able to see. And then score vision, we're getting a list of people to get that all updated and ready. And we should have that ready to go for Friday night as well, so.
Does your conditioner work in the gym?
Yes.
I've got complaints from my daughter that it's hotter than heck in there.
She gets them outside with us, it sure is. Today is training, what, next Monday? Ah, yeah, that'll be good. I think we should have Saturday practice. It looks like a nice school day.
Yeah. Typical football coach. Okay, I'll pass that on, that's on her head today.
She'll have to go outside.
I'll ask her about it.
I hung her hair.
Bring her, bring her a little Chinese fan or something.
A Harvard rug for a little fan and it has a water bottle attached to it.
Okay, print those reports.
I don't have anything specific to our, our minutes that we gave you. I just wanted to let you know that, so the roof is all happening now. And so it seems like it's almost a day-by-day adjustment. And we have to make changes and kind of go through things to navigate our school day. So if you feel like you're getting several phone calls in next month because of things happening in the elementary, just reiterate to the public that we just want to keep constant communication open as things change, as we navigate the school year with our off-campus and things that are changing. So that's the start of many phone calls, I'm sure.
Well, I think you, I'd like to thank the administration team because I know, I've heard from teachers, how much, Jen, you've helped move furniture. And all of our teachers need to be thanked because this was not in the plan for the beginning of the year of school. And I know well that it's just a big job just to start teaching. And you guys have all stepped up to the plate, so thank you.
And you've all had a.
The teachers also, but yeah.
You've all had a rough few years and you've proven to be very adaptable.
Thanks a lot.
Some of you had to do a total of one eighty, you were ready to go and then.
Uh huh. Yeah. And of all classes, kindergarten, you're, when you hit your kindergarten room, you know what stuff is in there? I do.
It's like it's like a sand table.
Yes, I mean, bless your hearts. Thank you very much for all your extra efforts.
And, you know, I would.
And please let the staff know that we appreciate them.
And Gail and his crew, I mean, I think it was about a day or two before they're like, you know, they put the last spit shine on it, elementary's done.
Yeah.
And we, I was having fun with Gail, say, had to start a summer, we got no projects this summer, first time in so long. Boy, and this is going to be sweet this summer, you know, we don't have the buildings blown up and this and that and other thing. And then jinxed.
It's much worse than the time that I rolled the bulletin board paper cart right after they waxed down to my room. And they had to know it was me and then put those lines because it went right to my room. That was not good.
Somebody set you up, they did that.
No, it was all on me, all on me. But thank you. And please let the staff know that we appreciate all your extra hours because I know it was extra hours. Bless you.
I think Dr. Arnold also wanted me to mention SEL because I think he provided in your packets the curriculum, correct?
Yes.
That we purchased. So K, it's broke up, K five, six, eight. So we have an actual guidance counselor curriculum now for all of our classes and what's going to be taught. So it has a scope and sequence of everything in there. Mr. Peter also came, he's a lot more in tune with it than what I am because he's the one that'll be teaching it. So if you guys have questions, but that's also provided in there because we purchased that last month.
That was a bit expensive, I would have noticed the claims, but Mr. Peter and Mrs. Ham, they've been asking for a couple of years. Be nice to kind of have an actual curriculum for us to teach in our guidance classes. Because they meet with, they meet with all our students through eighth grade or no?
Seventh grade, yeah.
Through eighth grade, you know, so, and, you know, they, they find things and pull things and talk about this, that, and the other thing. But it's, it's nice to have a curriculum. So second step is something that Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Hudson brought to me last year. I slow-played it, but this year, Mr. Peter did a lot of research and provided information for me. And we had some discussions about the scope and sequence, which is the scope and sequence. They're saying, well, what's, what's all involved in the curriculum and what is the pattern in which it's taught? So I, I wanted you to be aware because the, the chairman of the education committee at the UNICAMROL is conducting an interim study on SEL. So you may find in the Omaha World Herald, language from Dave Merman, Senator Dave Mer, Dave, Senator Merman, education committee chair, he is not a fan of SEL. He thinks it's a conduit for school districts to bring in inappropriate lessons and information. And so I just want to be fully transparent with you, wanted you to see the actual curriculum. And it's not also like Mr. Peter would go, you know, through the, everything. I mean, we'll make decisions about, we, we know our students, we know our community, we know the values of our community. And so we would easily recognize that this, this is a lesson that maybe isn't necessary in terms of. But a lot of it has to do with support for students, interactions with one another, some mental health information. But SEL stands for social emotional learning. Some people would read more, you know, too much into that. And I think where school districts have problems is where they don't trust their staff. And we know, we feel like we have the, the trust of our stakeholders and certainly of you that we thought we could take this step to bring second step, SEL curriculum to our students. So just, I would encourage you to look at that scope and sequence that was in your folder. And if you have any questions at all about any of the lesson titles, please bring those to us and, and we'll provide you more details if you think it's necessary.
Mr. Peter, do you have anything that you want to share?
I asked them to be.
Are you done, class?
Am I done?
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, I just was going to ask you, I know that the cell phone usage
Yes.
is not changed, correct, for the policy and the handbook?
So how we're handling it, and it'll still be allowed in the passing time in the hallways and during lunchtime.
Okay.
So that'll stay a good, as for in the classroom, we just had a conversation about it with teachers Thursday last week.
And what are their feelings about the cell phone?
They're the ones that came up with what we currently do.
Okay.
Because that was what we started two years ago. So.
Okay. I'm just concerned about them being distracted by social media or even influencers. I've been reading about that. Kids need a break from it. So just concerned watching.
So they should, they shouldn't have it for 49 minutes that they're in a classroom.
Is this the example of the pockets that?
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's where all headphones, smartwatches, cell phones, all of it goes.
Or fake phones.
That too.
I bet.
We don't need to.
I don't need to. I'm just telling you the reality.
You joke, it's all right. There was a student that had three phones.
Yeah.
It was real.
So they put a fake one in.
Yes, yes.
Put a, but kids.
Kind of give you very smart.
There goes your turn. I'm just concerned about cell phone usage more and you about it and social.
Me too.
And emotional, you know, when you talk about mental health, a lot of it can stem from social media. So I care about kids too much to live, be influenced by somebody that they shouldn't be influenced by. So.
Dan, would you give it that? All right, the president's report, I just got a couple of things. I see Linda Hamilton's resignation.
Yes.
She is in here, so I want to thank her for all her years of service, 29 years. And I hope she has a wonderful retirement. She's helping pass it on.
Yeah.
She didn't just walk out. She's probably around and taught the new person. So I appreciate that. So I hope she has many, many happy retirement days. Another thing I have, which I failed to mention in the building grounds part was, talked to Jane Demeruth today and I think you're aware that she's doing a couple benches in Jim's name out front here. Benches are supposed to be here, she thinks, this week. They're solid concrete. They weigh 2,200 pounds in piece. They're made up by Chicago somewhere. They're being shipped out. So they're Bill and, and Rich and.
Clausen.
Linkfeller, Nick.
Oh, Nick, yeah.
Are kind of doing, helping, they're going to tear, they gotta have five-inch thick cement to put these on. And some of the concrete in that area is already busted up. So they're willing to tear out some of our concrete, do the work, pour the new. They aren't going to pay for ours, but they're willing to pay for the concrete that they've set on. So that work will be starting here shortly. So I don't know if filling the grounds, did you guys?
Yeah, we talked a lot about that.
There's probably more work to be done than what they're going to do out there.
There is.
But.
There's a few squares, right?
Yep.
We haven't, you haven't lined anything up for anybody to do.
We, we just, while, while they're doing it, I told, yeah, I told Rich to tell the Clausen boys to pour those busted up ones along with what Jane needs.
So they're going to be part of those two Clausens at the same time?
Yes, the Clausen brothers. Yep.
Other contractor.
Different contractor, yeah. They've done all their concrete, that's similar.
So anyhow, you should see some, some activity out there. So that's all I have. Superintendent?
Okay, thanks for mentioning Linda Hamilton. In fact, she was kind of part of the reason I, we, we wanted to do some of this, this buyback of the unused PTO because she said, "Dr. Arnold, how much do I get for my unused 30 sick days?"
Thank you, Linda.
You know, and of course, she, she, she just, she didn't realize that there was no buyback of unused sick days. But I wish that we could retroactive to her. Yes, she's helped train LeVey. She's still working with LeVey. She's at, you know, LeVey's Becky Callaway. She needs support. So she's a, should be a sorelness, very valued employee over the years. We're fully staffed with hiring of Jeanie Hutek as a part-time professional. So we hired her about 10 hours before our first meeting and she shows up. She got like a standing ovation when she walked into the cafeteria, you know, and then.
Great.
Yeah, so, so we're delighted to have her. She knows us, we know her. That, that will be good. Got a brand-new van for SPED, $46,000 sticker price. Lance Peddak wrote the check for it.
Wow.
I mean, good brief. So I made sure I sent him a note. Obviously, I don't know if there's anything more I could or should do, but I sent him an Alexander note to he and his wife. So he's been so generous. So I mean, he paid for the last one, you know, five years ago. So what, what a generous, plain new high school alumnus, 1969, I believe. Somewhere about there. So we're going to get some ESR money. I'll be so happy when we're done with these ESR funds next year at this time. We'll finish out ESR three, but we're going to get about 80 out of about that 105 that's there coming up pretty quick. I'll be calling the American Civics Committee to gather and meet. Went to Administrator Days. You see Kyle and Jen's list of all the sessions that they attended. You all, there's also a picture in your folder of Kyle and Jen. They presented at Administrator Days. There's several thousand administrators from across Nebraska and Mrs. Hudson and Mr. Schmidt presented on using our branching minds to make bad-driven decisions. So they had good conversation with some administrators across the state. But we have two great leaders, statewide leaders in Mrs. Hudson and Mr. Schmidt, for sure. I attended a growing teacher pipeline, met with the new commissioner, collected teacher efficacy, student behavior awareness, and then a lot of legal, fun legal stuff with regard to schools. Jen talked about the elementary roof. I did share with Building and Grounds, or maybe the whole board by email, that we will need a kitchen hood next year. Fire marshal came and said, "Hey, you're out of code. I told you that years ago when you put in the sprinkler system." But I remember saying, "Do I have to fix it?" He said, "No, but you're out of code." I said, "Well, then we're not going to, you know, this thing's already too expensive." Well, now he's like, "I'm not going to let, I'm not going to take that as an answer." And well, part of the reason is we have a tin vent system and it's supposed to be a steel welded vent system. And so that vent system got destroyed when the roof blew off. And so we had to replace it. He won't let us replace it with another tin vent system. That makes sense. If we can't put a tin vent system back with this hood, so we need a whole new hood. Going to let us operate this year, which reminds me, I forgot to make some signs for the hood. Remind me tomorrow.
Hit those on.
He said, "But if you write a plan of corrections," and I have it in your folder, or in your packet, "A plan of corrections," he said, "I will approve you to operate as a kitchen." Because for a second there, he said, "I'm not sure we're going to let you operate as a kitchen." So we had a good meeting with our general contractor and the fire marshal. So he's going to let us operate, but we're going to have to budget for a new kitchen hood for next year. We'll need one much smaller than what we currently have, but it'll still cost more than it should. They're starting to work, work on the roof. I got a phone call today. He said, "Hey, can you shut your kitchen down on Wednesday, Thursday?" I said, "No." You should have started, should have did this roof last week over the kitchen. You were, you've been gone for 10 days. And I said it nicer than that. But he's like, "Well, we're going to be making a lot of noise." So I said, "Can't you start after 1:00? Start somewhere else and after 1:00 o'clock, go over to the kitchen area." So kind of working with our roofers and our general contractor. So now, you know, once they get done with over, and they're going to start right over Jen's office, and then once they get done with that, and it should only take them a few days, then they're going to be in that east wing where nobody is. So I wish it just didn't happen for them to be here last week because they had to take care of the place that had no roof at all. So it, it's okay. But as Jen said.
Still thankful they're.
It'll change day-to-day, I'm sorry.
We're still thankful that they're.
Yes, we, we are, we are. I don't, and I don't mean to suggest at all. Our insurance has been very good. Our contractor's been very good for sure. But, "Can you shut your kitchen down for two days?" "No, I can't. I can't shut it down for two days." What do we have to do? Well, we might have to do these two things, then, then do those.
Insurance won't cover this?
I don't know. I've got a meeting planned with insurance. Probably not. It's a secondary, secondary problem.
It wasn't pulled apart or whatever. It was just.
Can you just take a hammer?
Because it's still operating. I know, I, I.
Put some mold on it.
I, I would have liked to have found a way to, yeah. And who knows? I don't know. Maybe I'll, I, I, I've got a meeting with him if we had, we'll see. If, if they'll cover that. So there's our enrollment summary. We have our highest enrollment in 10 years to start a school year. Now, this includes our students that go to, you know, we don't have 259 kids on campus here. We have some kids at the ELC. But there are kids that, that you budget for, that we educate. 259 is our highest enrollment since 2011, 2012. So that's a positive thing. You can see my vacation balance, it's at 100.
That's 359.
What did I say?
200.
Did I say that last week too?
Yep.
I don't know. I said that last week, 259. Jen's like, "Oh, you're off by 100."
How many new kids this year?
359.
359, I'm sorry, 359. How many new kids? Handful.
Yeah, we just got another one today too, so.
And we'll have some tomorrow show up.
It's a great.
Say, "Hey, it's first day of school. We want to."
I'd say like, totally.
I will, I will.
10, 12.
Tomorrow's first day of school?
Yay.
12 hours.
You're bound to have, because our Friday, yeah, okay.
Fridays are a new carnival.
For tomorrow. Yeah, Friday.
I also put in your folder, you know, some information from Building and Grounds, just an update on, you know, progress over the past 15 years, your investments in our facilities and such. I just wanted you to have that.
Thank you all. Hopefully it'll also be back next month.
All right, thank you, Mike, for filling.